Sorry.
Well, you're happy because you're gonna get some time off, but you're acting well deserved.
Okay.
You were a little sick, I bet you. Saw you last night, so I was glad that you were.
It's a long trip.
You were feeling it earlier.
Well, you can just text me if you want.
I don't know how I did this. I had a little dreck.
But it's okay, you guys too.
I mean, it's pretty important.
Yeah? Yeah? That's fine. Yeah, true. That'd be the problem. Well, we're still, I believe, waiting on a student still.
Was it the morning?
For saying go ahead.
No, I did not.
It was vice last time, or last time I suggested cut it shorter. She said it was too big.
I think that's too many shots.
So how do you say can?
So then this time they do it.
Good evening and welcome to the Oregon Board of Education meeting of November 21st, 2023. We'll have the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one good God, and indelible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have the roll call, please.
Certainly. And Mrs. Gathers?
Here.
And Mrs. Molnar?
Here.
And Mr. Savick?
Here.
Please silence all personal electronic devices during the meeting. I need a motion to adopt the agenda as written. Sumoed. A second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Gathers?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
And Mrs. Molnar?
Thank you.
And then we are ready for our faculty report, please. Could you please give us your name?
I'm Leah Burkett.
Take it now, sure. Whatever you need.
Twist it in the, kind of in the middle of the box.
Yeah, right there.
Did you get it?
No. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Usually we twist them.
Between all of us, we should be able to figure it out.
So when you get it where you want it, just twist it back to the right to lock it. I'll keep it a little square.
Hello, I'm an eighth grader at Facet Junior High and my name is Leah Burkett. I'm here to talk about all of the activities that Facet Junior High allows students to participate in. We've tried our hardest to make this presentation short and sweet, and I hope you all enjoy it. We are continuing with our Eagle of the Week program where students can be given high five cards from teachers and staff and have added a green light ticket awarded by our bus drivers for exemplary behavior. From these tickets, students' names will be drawn every other week to win prizes or eat lunch with a friend. In mid-September, Facet's eighth grade band participated in a clay football game with the clay band. Students had the opportunity to play their instrument, join the major ex, or they could learn what's involved with clay's color guard. Also during the first quarter, all of Facet's clubs started up for the year. These clubs include the chess club, art club, fitness club, spirit club, student council, mini model UN, and the UVA club. In celebration of the end of the fall sports season at Facet, we held a recognition pep rally to support, to celebrate the hard work and dedication of Facet's athletes. Speaking of fall sports, all of Facet's teams have grown and learned throughout the season. The eighth grade football team finished the season undefeated and won the East Division championship. The girls' cross-country team got second place at the Eagles invite, and both seventh and eighth grade girls volleyball teams made it to their tournament. Also during the first quarter, 50 girls from seventh and eighth grade attended the STEM Goes Red event at Owens Corning. The event was free for students to attend, and they learned about many different careers instead. At the end of the first quarter, we celebrated students who earned a 3.5 or higher GPA with ice cream sundaes during lunch. That's a wrap-up of the first quarter update. On October 19th, our student council hosted the Volley for Akira event and raised over $2,000. This money was split between Susan G. Coman and Cancer Connections of Northwest Ohio. Shortly after that, the Spirit Club led Red Ribbon Week, picking out themes that encourage students to live drug-free. On the Sunday before Halloween, our student council passed out candy for the Candy Crawl. On the 1st of November, the eighth graders toured clay and learned about all of the courses, career technical, and extracurricular opportunities. Our winter sports are getting ready to start, and our Facet Girls basketball team will have their first game on the 5th of December. Shortly after that, our band will have their concert on the 12th, and the following night, the choir will have their concert. Our choir will also have the privilege of caroling at the Toledo Zoo for the lights before Christmas the day after their concert, December 14th. Student council has been campaigning for canned goods for the past one and a half weeks and will be launching our annual grade level penny war competition for the first two weeks of December. Proceeds from these two areas will benefit our local Oregon and Jerusalem township food basket program. We appreciate the board and Mr. Gregory for allowing us to update you on the recent and upcoming events at Facet.
Wow, that was amazing.
Wow, that was.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you guys for taking the time to come out, and I know that's not easy, but it is nice to hear our students and hear what's up with, you know, lead, future leaders, if you will, for student government. So, so thank you so much for doing that. I'm gonna honor myself. That was a really big offense. Really, really well done.
Yes, nice job. We give you an A.
For the work and the presentation, the work is great, but you did a nice job of summarizing that. You were well spoken, well organized. I could tell you knew the information you weren't just reading in it. That will serve you well in whatever you choose to do in your future, so keep it up.
Good, very well done. Okay. Staff and community recognition, Mr. Gregory.
Yes, I'd like to invite Shannon, or Josh Shannon.
Shannon, oh, please.
Wonder where that came from.
Well, at least you were half right.
Yes, half right. Usually what I am. So, just real quick here, is this on? Was this even on? I don't even know. It wasn't even on, and you did great without the microphone. So, we've been trying as a district to recognize our fantastic staff each and every board meeting with having different groups come. So, I'm very thankful that some of you were able to make it tonight, especially on going into the holidays and those types of things. So, really on behalf of the entire board and the district, we're recognizing all our bus drivers in transportation. Josh Shannon is our leader, our director, our coordinator, our problem solver, a driver at times, I think, and a number of other things. But certainly excited for what he does, and we've had a lot of changes in our transportation department. And I just have to say this because I go to superintendent's meetings all the time, every month, and inevitably, no matter whether it's an informal setting or a formal setting, I get asked, "How you doing in transportation? What kind of bus drivers or how many do you have, and how's it going?" And I always say, "It's great." I mean, we have our routes filled, our drivers are doing a great job, we have a couple of subs, you know, a couple. We're always looking for more. And then I hear back, you know, just sometimes an utter disaster that's going on in some other districts in terms of not even close to covering routes, constant problems, no subs, no any of that. And anyways, I just feel very, very proud, and I hope you will take tonight as just a small recognition of what you all do on behalf of our district and our kids. It's a dangerous job, it's a scary job, it's an important job. You're the first thing that our kids see and the last thing our kids see every single day. So, so thank you on behalf of the ones that are here, and certainly the entire group. And Josh, thank you for everything you do.
Josh told us we're getting a steak dinner, that's why.
Steak dinner. Awesome, I wanna come along, Josh. Let me know what that is. That's great. So what's gonna happen is, he's gonna read your names, I'm gonna hand out the certificates, and then we're gonna have you wait up here and we'll take a picture when we're done. Okay? Go ahead. David Ackerman? If you're not, yeah, just put him on. Stacy Atkins? Denise Allen? Kind of steak do you like? Any kind?
Cooked by somebody else.
Cooked, cooked by somebody else. But I'm here, thank you for everything. Lucas Annerman? Mary Aitney? Don Ball? Don Brock? Pam Pavinco? Gail Crepes? Diane Dryer? Ready to go for the big game. I like it. Thank you for everything.
Thank you.
For coming out tonight. Charles Gaskins? Marcella Gonzalez? Leslie Harrison? Michelle Haynes? Tanya Henninger? Shane Hornstein? Justine Holland Feller? Sue Jankowski? Thank you very, very much for coming out whenever you need to.
Thank you.
Stephanie Jeffries? Whitney Jones? Dawn King? Amanda Klein-Dice? Very much. Carrie Laboon? Becky Legere? Quinn McDougall? Sue McKean? Jim Murphy? Vicki Ponkin? Mercedes Pacino? Linda Ritchie? Cindy Rodriguez? Jean Ruskinoff? Lynn Slaughter? Patty Smithers? Kevin Snyder? Carla Keys? Patty Tolles Fisher? Denise Fargo? Jamie Vermette? Cheryl Walsh? Anita Woodarz? It's okay. Yeah, okay, so I didn't know. All right, yeah, I know, you're just like. All right, well, congratulations to all these folks. Thank you for coming through. So Josh, I want you in the picture as well.
Suck it in.
Yeah, yeah, however, however you wanna do this.
I don't know.
Somebody had to lay down in front.
Hold on as I go. Not that kind of picture, ladies. Oh, this is great. Okay, on three, one, two, three. Awesome, thank you, guys. Congratulations. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Josh, thank you for everything. And we will get these certificates to the rest of the bus drivers. Okay?
Right here.
Thank you very much.
And at this time, if you went away, you're more than welcome to go home. Or you can stay for the meeting, it's up to you, but you don't have to stay if you think you could do like make a trip.
Thank you, everyone, thank you.
Thank you.
Gotta go home too with that steak. We were all at.
Man, Josh is, Josh is under a lot of pressure with this steak thing. It's a public. Thank you, everyone. Happy holidays.
Okay, moving on, public participation at board meetings. I have no cards to use, is there?
I have nothing.
Thank you. Please be advised that this meeting is being audiotaped and will be available on the district website. And we move on to the treachery report.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Hall. Briefly, the first, I have a few items to touch on. The first is that we are accepting, I believe, the Crete Tech construction grant. And with that, there are a couple of things we need to do. First is we'll need to establish the 495 fund, which is what we've been told we're gonna be putting it in when the grant money comes to us. And then we also are required with this grant to provide some local dollars to Austin. I think it was like 155,000 right around here.
Contingency plus the 25,000 that we committed within the grant application itself.
So, I will be using the OO, some OO3 PI Medicare funds, and we'll be basically transferring them from an OO39OO2 to an OO39O24. It's within the same fund, we typically don't need a major, you know, motion for it. We certainly can next board meeting. I just want you to know where the money's coming from. Coming from Medicare funds, and then the general fund will be donating 75,000 as well. Not donating, but transferring. Yeah, so this is where the money will be coming from to our share of the money for the 1.6 million. Also, I just got word, I don't think I told you yet, we will be receiving 196,000 from the fiscal year '21-'22 Medicaid settlement. That always goes into the PI fund, and I just want you aware of it. That will be one of the areas that we'll use to help pay for the new building construction project. I did update the permanent appropriation measure, which is attached behind your report. It's for the new funding of the 1.6 million with the construction grant. It's also adjusted very modestly to agree with the five-year forecast for the general fund. And I also adjusted the OO3 fund to accommodate the Medicare transfer now that I know the exact amount. So, that's the updated permanent appropriation measure. The five-year forecast, we talked about in a little more detail, and this is just the summary of it in our last board meeting. The summary is that we are actually, we are spending deficit, but our cash balances are very, very strong. So, we may actually fiscally sound through fiscal year '26-'27. So, nothing negative about that. I had the details behind, and I think I sent out the worksheets prior to this. And there were very few changes, a little modest things, you know, but it's the same trend. We're looking at, as at the end of this forecast, fiscal year '27-'28. We have nine trip catch days, but obviously we'll wanna address something before that time. But at this point, we have Solomon District, so that's good news. So, unless there are questions, that is my report tonight, I don't, yeah.
May I have a motion to accept, please?
Solmude.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Glad to hear we're solving.
We are in good shape, yes.
Roll call?
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Gathers?
Yes.
And Mrs. Molnar?
Yes. To, does anybody have a need for executive session? Thank you. Consent agenda. I do want to explain a clarification on B2. Thomas Brower and Robert Kirk, they were on our last agenda listed as assistant hockey coaches, and they are co-assistant, so that's why that's on there. It's to make sure that that's correct. Are there any items that the board wishes to pull from the regular consent agenda? Hearing none, I need a vote. May I have a motion? Sumoed. A second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Gathers?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
And Mrs. Molnar?
Yes.
Mrs. Molnar, if I could just take a quick second for introduction?
Yes.
So, if you look in the back, if I could direct your attention to the back. This young lady is Samantha English. Part of our special education program is speech pathology, speech services to kids, and that has grown and grown and grown, and continues to grow. So, working with the director, De Kosek, we really believed we needed to add support and add services to that. So, Sam is our new speech pathologist that's gonna join the three current ones that we have with us. So, Sam, why don't you just kinda introduce who's with you real quick? Because I know she's probably getting tired of boarding.
Sure, so this is my husband, Andrew, and my two-year-old, Brooke.
Yeah. So, welcome. We're very excited to get you rolling. She's gonna start after the second semester or when the second semester starts. So, we're excited to have her. So, thank you and welcome.
Welcome, welcome, sweetie. Glad to have you. And your daughter, and everybody. Because once you're in the family, it's a whole small family. Okay, moving on to.
And feel free to sneak out if you want.
Yes.
It's up to you.
It'll be bedtime soon, I'm sure. Moving on to new business, the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission resolution. A motion is needed to approve a resolution authorizing Oregon City Schools to enter into a resolution of acceptance in the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission Career Technical Construction Program. May I have a motion, please?
Solmude, with thanks to everyone who's been involved with this major project.
A second?
A second.
Any discussion?
So, is this related to the grant?
This is the grant that I was thinking about first.
Okay, I assumed it just didn't say that explicitly, so.
Essentially, it's a, it's a, and correct me if I'm wrong, this proof, but essentially, it's an approval of the budget and then our portion, local share. And once it's approved, then Jenny does her magic with accounts, and we sign it, board president, both of us, and we can get the approval, full approval from the state.
Great.
And that's a lot of money.
Yep. It's pretty awesome.
It's pretty awesome.
Any further discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Gathers?
Yes.
And Mrs. Molnar?
Yes.
Item B, authorization to purchase van bids from the Ohio Schools Council. Whereas the Oregon City School District is a member of the Ohio Schools Council, on May 1st, 2023, the Ohio Schools Council received bids for passenger vans on behalf of its members. The Oregon City School District authorizes the purchase of one van that was bid through the Ohio Schools Council. This is just the investigation of a, of a purchase, is that correct, Al?
Yeah, and the way it's worded makes it sound like we're actually committed to purchase, like we are not. But this is a pre-motion prior to, if a decision is made, we have the authorization from the board to go through the Ohio Schools Council to purchase a van, which we tried to, down below, I guess, qualify that a little bit to the public here, that it's just a prior, pre-process.
Therefore, be it resolved, the Oregon City School District Board of Education wishes to purchase one ninth passenger van from bids received through the Ohio Schools Council on May 1st, 2023. And that's what the motion allows us to investigate that. May I have a motion? May I have a motion, please, to do so? Sumoed, a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Is there a particular purpose, like, that's in mind for the van?
Yeah. We've been talking for, as long as I've been in the district, about maybe going and having a van that would allow not only smaller athletic teens to go to events in a smaller thing, but also, you know, co-curricular events and those types of things. So, you know, you see vans, school vans out everywhere. So we just feel like now's the time to go ahead and make a move on that. We're still investigating though everything that goes along with the purchase of a van. It's new to us. We have to sort through who drives it. Bus drivers certainly will be able to, and will probably do the majority of those driving. But there are other options too for coaches and advisors as well, given the circumstance. So I think we've all finally come to an agreement that we're comfortable with the idea of buying a van. Now it's just making the decision to do so if we choose to do so this year.
Mr. Shannon, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, he's done a lot of research.
If you guys have, if you have any questions specifically about it, I'll be happy to answer. I've done a lot of the research coming into this as well. And exactly the types of things that we want to use it for. And that, you're right on, you know. We have a couple of teams that when they get further along in playoffs and things like that, where there may only be a few students that are going, it makes a lot more sense to do that than to take a full bus. But then a lot of our shuttles and stuff like that, where we're only transporting five or six students, this van would be really useful. And even if it's, you know, preferably, it'd still be our bus drivers driving that van most of the time. But using that as opposed to a bus that gets eight miles a gallon, if we're lucky, we can use that van and save quite a bit of money with transportation costs.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Catters?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
And Mrs. Muller?
Yes.
Okay. Item C, disposal of materials. From the district, we have 372 different student materials, 10 teacher materials, four supplementary materials, and a Sony CD/ DVD player from the high school. May I have a motion to dispose of these things, please?
Does that take a motion? Well, I think you're right. I'm sorry. It didn't have an offer.
Yeah, but we usually do.
Yes, we do.
Sumoed, a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Catters?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Muller?
Yes.
Item D, disposal of equipment and materials. The items listed on the October 17th Agenda for disposal have been disposed of in accordance with the board policy. Item E, donations. We need a motion to accept the following donations. From E.S. Wagner, permanent lighting for the north end zone of the stadium, valued $6,649.47. The Leve Electric Company for permanent lighting on the north end zone of the stadium, with a value of $6,649.47. Mr. Joel Paulson for a pediatric wheelchair for use in our sped department, value $150. Sunovius Energy for donating two 75-inch Sony TVs for Facet's new weight room, estimated value $2,000. East Toledo Oregon Kiwanis donation, $2,000, to Star Elementary for their book vending machine. The Knights of Columbus donated coats and hats for students at Star Elementary, value $1,000. And the River East Mother Knights of Columbus donated 29 student jackets with ads and gloves to Coy Elementary, a value of $1,000. May I give a motion to accept this, please?
Sumoed with gratitude.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
All right, Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Catters?
Yes.
And Mrs. Muller?
Yes.
Superintendent Trigg?
Yes. Good stuff. Lots of, lots of good things happening with those donations. Just a couple of things to highlight. One, we talked about it a couple of different environments, but this, very excited about this new environmental ag facility. And it's going to be, for the next year, something that, you know, is exciting. We've had a lot of these kind of projects. And they're fun to get excited about and watch happen and watch, come to fruition and get built and get completed and have a ribbon cutting. So really, if everything goes to plan, we'll bid the project in January, start some point in late spring, early summer. And it'll take about a year is just a general estimate at this point, with hopefully the opening for the '25-'26 school year. So the fall of '25, that's kind of tentative. And a big thank to Mrs. Ben, who really took the time to do the vast majority of writing of this. And to everyone that she got input from, including the teachers and Mr. Sandwich. So very exciting, very grateful. It's not, it kind of happened so fast, we didn't really realize it, you know. And right time, right place. And if you've been back there, you'll realize how bad it looks and how the current facility is falling down and falling apart. So it couldn't be a better timing. So very excited about that, as we all are. Just want to give a shout out to our Oregon Schools Foundation and Amy Hansen. I know a lot of us internally know what happens with that. But over the course of the last decade or so, things have just exploded with our foundation and just with donations in general to Oregon State Schools. And it's one of the best, in my opinion, and well-run foundations and organizations because Amy does it right. She cares about the people that donate. She treats them right. They treat us right. We recognize it the right way. And just can't thank all those people enough. And she gave a stat at a donor recognition event last night that in the past five years, the foundation has given $1.175 million back to Oregon City Schools, teachers, and programs. And again, that's a culmination of a lot of different gifts that have come through that. But when you total it all up in a five-year study, that's a nice, nice number. So I just wanted to give a shout out to all the OSF board members and all, they're all volunteers. It's all something they do just because they care and they want to give back. So thank you to all of those people so much for what they do on behalf of the Oregon City Schools. Just want to let everybody know that the winter season's underway. It's really kicking off here in the next week or two with official games. We've had scrimmages and things, but it's getting, it's getting moving. So I'm super excited about it. We have a lot of new energy. We have several new coaches, several second-year coaches that are building on their first year. So the winter, the winter season's going to be fun. Very excited about the energy that's going on. So I'm just, I guess, put a shout out for what's going to happen here in the next three or four months. And just lastly, I want to give one last shout out to my secretary, my administrative assistant, Carol Sankrant, who all of us internally know, almost everybody in the district knows. But it's rare. She is retiring after 41 years in our district. And 31 of those years have been the superintendent's secretary. And so I get to claim I'm the only one she hasn't run out yet. So in a joke, we joke about that all the time. But we are super excited for her, but we are going to miss her. And I just wanted to publicly thank her for, you know, the 41 years. All have been in the administration building. She started out as a receptionist at the front desk, went to the assistant soup, and then to the superintendent over those years. So Carol's something special. She's kind, she's caring, she's sassy, and she's fun. If you work with her every day, she always does everything she can to make you feel good, even if maybe she's not having the best day. And she's said to me countless times, "It'll be okay, Al. It's going to be fine." You know, and sincerely, when I'm like, you know, not doing real well about a particular thing or whatever, she's always been the one to make everyone feel good. So I just wanted to share that with our audience. And she's going to be missed and congratulate her for, her last day is the end of next week. So she'll be done after 41 years. So that's just an amazing thing to me. And happy Thanksgiving and holidays, obviously, to everybody. And we thank you for everything. That's my report.
You know, a grandchild will pull you along.
And that. Yep, that was her driving force. And she is, you know, she's got mixed emotions. She still loves her job and does, does her job in a way that she has always done it. There is, she hasn't, you know, stepped down at all from her job. And she was working late tonight because she's trying to get a project, big project, done before she steps down. So amazing person.
Yes, we were very lucky to have her. Very lucky. Okay, any old business. Okay, board reports, finance is not here, capital improvement is not here. Policy personnel will finish up with the new policy book.
Yep, we're down to the last, like, five policies to finish. And what's that? So it'll come at, probably first read in January.
Again.
District continues to celebrate the achievement of a four-star status. And you'll notice all the buildings have signs on them. And several parents have noticed it. They made comments, teachers. And we're just very grateful for all the work that everyone has put in to help us get to that, not the least of whom is Mrs. Coy. She's done an amazing job, and she continues to do an amazing job. And, you know, with Theo saying you're only as good as your last game, so we have to continue to, continue to step forward for the, for the sake of our children and also for the people in the district. Mrs. Coy's been doing a lot of homework, doing a lot of deep dives into the data as far as to see where, where we have been, why we've been so successful in the last year or so, making the jump, but also what the opportunities are for growth in the future. And if you look at some of the numbers, percentages-wise, in the buildings, you're seeing passage rates increased by double digits pretty much across the board. And it just, it's really, really nice to see that, that all the work that the teachers, the parents, and the administration's putting in to make sure that our kids, that's the reason why we're here. We're here to educate our children. They're doing really, a really great job, and we're very grateful for that. It's just nice to see the growth that we continue to enjoy. And then, and then make sure we take advantage of those opportunities in the, in the years ahead to continue to, to make this a great district, a great district that it is. Make sure that we continue that and also to grow that as well. Today was the last day of school. I'm sure everyone's celebrating that. We have no school for the next three days for the Thanksgiving holiday break. The OST and of course, exams for the kids at Clay, the ninth through 12th graders, will take place December 6th through December 8th. And then on December 7th through the 8th, the Facet Rigorous Curriculum Design Team Training and Work Sessions will take place. One of the things that I know that is a priority for this district is we want to not only make sure that we're scoring well, but we also want to increase achievement and make sure that we are giving our kids the very best tools they can get to walk out of here, whether it's in college and career opportunities, whatever it may be. We want to make sure that we are giving them the best that the Oregon School District can do. So that's the report for the Happy Dynamics.
Thank you. Legislative, if not here, student achievement. Are you, I think that's folded into what you already said.
Yeah. The OSB meetings last week were held. And there were a variety of things that were discussed. Although I will tell you, it was a much less contentious meeting than last year's was. As you know, Mrs. Muller, you were there. And it moved along very quickly. The governor was there talking about it. Unfortunately, we lost a number of students who were coming to perform on that second day in a very, very sad accident that took place. The children were on their way to perform at the Ohio School Boards Meeting. And our prayers and thoughts are to go with everyone in that community. And just can't imagine, that's just...
Okay, board discussion. I think we have so many programs coming up. Elementarys, junior highs, and so forth. And then Vespers at the High Schools, December 17th. The Clay Plays over with as of Sunday afternoon. And I think everything else has been covered. Does anyone else have anything? Okay. Moving on, executive session, anybody? Okay. Announcement of meetings. The regular board meeting I have down is December 19th. Work session. Are we looking at...
Well, I was, I was looking at that before the meeting. And I guess there, so the Tuesday, the 5th, which is a lot of times we've done it. I know there's a meeting at 7:00, digital awareness, a parent meeting that I'd like to attend. So I mean, I could do something before that, for sure. The 6th, the Toledo Symphony is here at 7:00. Again, would like to attend, but I'm just, you know, if it's early enough, it'd be great. And then it's senior night for wrestling on Thursday. So if we stick to the 5 o'clock, I think we're good. If, if we want, or we can skip, or we can skip this month. I mean, it's up to the board. I mean, I'm not...
Do we normally do it the first Tuesday?
We bounce all around. I can't even say we've had a consistent day, to be honest with you. Usually, we shoot for the first week, but we've had it in the second week. But Mrs. Muller, it might be a month that we just skip over as well. I mean, I don't have a lot of stuff for December personally. I mean, there's always plenty we can talk about. So I don't know if you want to, for now, just maybe hold off. I'm going to pick a date. There's just so much going on.
See if something comes up and then we can, I can let everybody know. Okay.
So December 19th at 6 for the regular, as the only official...
That's the only thing I have.
Yeah. Great, thank you.
Okay. Anything else for the good of the board? Thank you, bus drivers. You have the one job I've been wanting.
I really miss your brownies, just so you know.
Here, here, I'm with you on that.
We'll have to take care of this. We're like, where are those brownies? We'll take care of it.
Because if she brings some for you, she'll bring some to our office.
I'm begging.
Okay, let's have a motion to adjourn.
Sumoed.
Second. Okay. Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Catters?
Yes.
And Mrs. Muller?
Yes.
Sorry for the pressure, Carol. They started it, though.